All right, thank you so much. All right. So we'll go ahead to call the meeting. We'll start with the sunshine law. Mr. Bernstein, can you take it away?
Not a problem, Mr. Chair, and I'll hold on to it until we get to the chair. This is a regular, this is the reorganization meeting of the City of East Orange Planning Board, set for Wednesday, January third, two thousand and twenty-four at six thirty P M. It's now six thirty-seven. Adequate notice of this reorganization meeting was provided in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and J S A ten colon four dash six at sec. Official notice of this meeting was placed on the city's website, provided to the city's official newspaper, given to any individual who sought notice of such meeting as well as posted on any or all other platforms that the city provides for official notice. This is a Zoom meeting being conducted electronically on the Zoom platform under the provisions of law. Adequate notice of the Zoom reorganization meeting has also been provided in accordance with the same provisions that I set forth earlier regarding official notification on both the city's website, city's official newspaper, and related items. Mr. Chairman, well, I put that in quotes. Uh, and and for those of you, Dominic Niani is not here. He's basqueting at Brian Hack, just in case you're interested. And Brian will be handling the the regular meeting later because I have more reorgs to go to. Um, this is a reorganization meeting. Janice, do we have any individuals who need to be sworn in for these positions who are on the?
Commissioner Gonano.
Okay. Tom?
Yep.
You wanna click on the camera?
Not really, but uh, just give me a second.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bernstein. Also, Commissioner Agnani.
The 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 hand thing, I know. Let me get.
That's fine. Commissioner Agnani, Commissioner Guanano need to be sworn in. Anyone else, Janice?
No, not not anyone else.
Commissioner Agnani, Commissioner Guanano.
Miss Miss Janice, um, uh, councilwoman, um, here. Oh, she's there. Okay.
Yes.
The mayor, the mayor also needs to be sworn in.
Councilwoman.
Good evening. Yeah, all right. For those of you who need, which is the mayor, Commissioner Yanni, Commissioner Guanano, raise your right hands. And so after me, I state your name.
I, Loretta Agnani.
I, Mayor Ted Green.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the government.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Planning board member.
Planning board member.
According to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
To help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations to all. Thank you for turning your camera on, Commissioner.
Thank you.
With that, can I get a roll call?
Commissioner Nick. Commissioner Negron, Commissioner Negron is absent. Commissioner Garrett Ward, who has not been sworn in yet, is absent.
I'll have to swear. No, she's here. Here, but she's muted.
Hold up, guys. Councilman, woman, um, Garrett Ward is on. Just need to explain to her that she got to get sworn in. She's the new chair for the planning board, so I just wanted to make that of note.
Is she the council representative mayor?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I point out to the, um. Commissioner, can you unmute?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Garrett Ward.
You were unmuted. Now you're you're back to muted again.
Yeah, muting out my background noise. I'll just unmute when I need to talk.
Not a problem. Were you sworn in by the clerk to this position, councilwoman?
No, I wasn't.
All right, then I will quickly swear you in. I apologize. I state your name.
I, Samika Garrett Ward.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of the office of planning board member.
Of the office of planning board member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations and welcome and continue the role.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome. Who's taking the role?
I am, Miss Counsel.
We we have Commissioner Garrett Ward is here.
Commissioner Garrett Ward is present. Commissioner Hall. Commissioner Hall.
He's present.
Commissioner Hall is present. Commissioner Hudson. Commissioner Hudson is absent. Commissioner Agnani. Commissioner Agnani is present. Commissioner Cipio. Commissioner Cipio is absent. Commissioner Sinclair. Commissioner Sinclair is absent. Commissioner Gonano.
Present.
Commissioner Gonano is present. Commissioner Kivutu.
Present.
Commissioner Green.
Present.
We have a quorum, Chairman.
The first item of business commissioners is the selection of a planning board chair for calendar year two thousand and twenty-four. Do I hear any nominations?
I make a motion for Matende to be the chair for the twenty-fourth year for the planning board.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion by Mayor Green, second by Commissioner Ganano. Any other uh nominations for chair other than Mr. Kivutu?
For motion to close the nominations.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Take a roll call, Janice, for the nomination of Mr. Kivutu for chairman.
Commissioner Garrett Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall? Commissioner Agnani?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonano?
Yes.
Commissioner Kivutu?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
And does Commissioner Ward also vote on this?
She voted.
Okay, my fault. My apologies.
Uh, with that, Mr. Chairman, I turn this meeting over to you and congratulations on becoming chairman again.
Thank you, everybody, and thank you for entrusting me with this position. Uh, we're gonna go get at it again uh for the two thousand and twenty-four year and we'll hope to get some good projects and get some good things going. So uh with that being said, everybody, um, uh, we got our next part of the agenda, which is the nomination for vice chair. Um, I'd like to make a motion to have uh vice uh vice chair of Thomas Ganano as a the vice chair for the planning board. Do I have a second?
Checking out a motion of Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um, are there any other nominations other than Mr. Ganano? All right, hearing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Garrett Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall? Commissioner Agnani?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonano?
Yes.
Commissioner Kivutu?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
Let's go.
All right, uh, let's go to the next part of the agenda. Uh, professional consultants, uh, planning board attorney. Um, I'd like to make the motion to retain the services that Mr. Bernstein and E M B Law. Uh, do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Uh, any other nominations? All right, hearing none, can I please have a roll call?
Commissioner Garrett Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall? Commissioner Hudson, I'm sorry, Commissioner Agnani?
Yes.
Commissioner Sin, Commissioner Gonano?
Yes.
Commissioner Kivutu?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
I think we lost it all about maybe ten, about five or ten minutes ago, too.
Excuse me, sir, ago?
Commissioner Hall fell off, I think, about maybe five minutes.
He did.
Yeah.
I think he was looking for a spot he could find light and and uh. Thank you, commit, thank you commissioners again for your support and we look forward to it. And as I said earlier, because I have other reorgs to attend, Brian refuses to bring the samples home. Also for the afternoon meeting, he will be handling tonight. I will see you.
Everyone.
I'm not, I'll leave after the reorg. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Hmm, thank you. All right, so next part is uh uh professional consultants, planning board, planning consultant. Uh, I'd like to make the nomination to have Steve Martini and his firm uh as our planning board consultant. Um, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Commissioner Ganano. Do we have any other nominations? All right, hearing none, can I please have a roll call?
Commissioner Garrett Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall? Commissioner Agnani?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonano?
Yes.
Commissioner Kivutu?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
He's on mute, but he's here.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Green? Yeah, we need a vote.
Oh, we need that. We need an extra one.
Yeah, we need his vote. Uh, Commissioner Green, are you on?
See what happened here.
Actually, if he's still here, but he's not voting, you've got four votes in favor. You don't need five to approve.
I see Commissioner Hall is on.
And Commissioner Paul is back?
Yes.
You wanna call his name, then, Janice?
Commissioner Hall?
I think he's having an issue with his audio, though.
Yeah, I said, yes. Thomas, okay, for yes.
Yes, oh.
He can vote through the chat, he can vote through the chat if he needed to, just so he knows, you know.
That's fair. So.
Thank you, Chairman and Board. Uh, me, me and my firm issuing group look forward to serving you this year.
Thank you so much, so much. Um, Commissioner Hall, if uh you, if you're still having audio issues, just type on the chat. Yeah, no, so that we know, so it's on uh on record. All right, um, and then the next last part of our professional consultants is uh planning board engineering consultant. Uh, I'd like to nominate Panoni and the services from Todd Hay. I know the Piti is uh representing him tonight. Uh, do I have a motion?
I make, I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we uh for the engineering.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Agnani. Um, are there any other nominations for engineering consultant? Hearing none, Janice, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Garrett Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall? Commissioner Agnani?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonano?
Yes.
Commissioner Kivutu?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you so much, the Piti. Uh, welcome back again, and thank you so much for your services.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last part of our reorganization meeting is to adopt the two thousand and twenty-four calendar hearings. Um, I will add that I do have a question for the commissioners regarding the July meeting. I know last year we had a issues with the meeting because it felt very close to Independence Day. This uh time around for our meeting, um, the meeting is actually on the third, which is the Wednesday before, basically the day before Independence Day. Um, I'd like to see if it was a possibility maybe to moving that to a Tuesday if it's uh feasible for the board as well as also the city. Um, just wanted to get those thoughts out there.
That Tuesday or the following Tuesday, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, excuse me?
Is the second or the ninth?
Yeah, I'll say, yeah, I'll say in the second, just because I I'm, I know that there could be possibly other meetings that next week. But again, I'm not sure if there's any Tuesday meetings that might um that might interfere.
I mean, I I mean, I'm, I would be fine with it if this, if, you know, this, have all our support staff can make it and stuff. Because we do tend to get busy around that time, too. It seems like, like every year it's a little backed up for some reason.
All right, so with that being said, um, I'd like to adopt the calendar hearings um with the only change being instead of the July third date, moving it to July second. Um, do I have a motion?
Um, motion, uh, motion to adopt the calendar with the noted change for July second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Agnani. Uh, can I, we please have a roll call?
Wait, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
So the meetings are the first Wednesday of each month?
Yeah, they're the first Wednesday each month, but you know, being the fact that um, July third, you know, it's literally right next to the fourth, you know, people might take off holidays and especially because Independence Day is falls on a Thursday, I would assume some people might want to take that Friday off. Um.
I was just making sure that I had my notes correct, that it's the first Wednesday of each month.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Not a problem. So with that being said, can I have a roll call?
Commissioner Garrett Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall? The Agnani?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonano?
Yes.
Commissioner Kivutu?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you so much. All right, with that being said, um, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the reorganization meeting uh for July, for January third. Um, I'll just say all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Am I, do I hear any nays?
Mm-hmm.
No nays? All right, thank you so much, everybody, for taking your time out. Um, we have, yeah, we literally have four minutes, so take your time to, you know, get yourself ready for, you know, upcoming meeting at seven o'clock.
Janice?
Yes, Miss Council?
Can you send us, when you get a minute, a list of all the board members with their contact information as well as Steve's? I've got multiples of Steve, copies of Steve's information, like there's a lot of have it one place.
Sure, will do.
So we're making sure he's getting his uh just reward, so to speak.
Okay, I will do that.
Always a pleasure, Steve, and everybody happy. Take care.
Yes.
See you.
Rhonda, we can go ahead and close off the recording for right now until uh the seven o'clock meeting. Thank you so much. All right, with that being said, um, Mr. Hock, can you take it away with the sunshine law, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, this meeting is being convened in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act of the State of New Jersey. Uh, let the official minutes reflect that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by publishing a notice in the city's official newspaper and thereafter posting same on the city's bulletin board for such notices and following same with the city clerk as well as posting same on the city's webpage. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hock. Um, with that being said, Janice, can we have roll call, please? Janice? We'll go ahead with roll call, please.
Commissioner Negron, Commissioner Negron is absent. Commissioner Garrett Ward?
Present.
Commissioner Hall?
He's here.
Commissioner Hudson. Commissioner Hudson is absent. Commissioner Agnani?
Present.
Commissioner Cipio. Commissioner Cipio is absent.
Commissioner.
Present, present.
Oh, Commissioner Cipio is present. Commissioner Sinclair? Commissioner Sinclair is absent. Commissioner Gonano is present.
Present.
Commissioner Kivutu?
Yes.
And Commissioner Green? We have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you so much. Uh, this Commissioner Hall, I know that you're having audio issues. When we have, go up to vote, just put thumbs up or thumbs down with your picture, just so we know that, um, so we know your, your decision. Um, okay, so with that being said, commissioners, we'll start off the meeting with the memorization of minutes for the December two thousand and twenty-three meeting.
You know what?
Um, when you get a, uh, commissioners that are eligible to vote uh for the memorization of minutes are commissioners Ganano, Hudson, well, commissioners Ganano, Agnani, Cipio, and myself. So commissioners, please take a moment to review the minutes. And um I'd like to make a motion to approve those minutes for December two thousand and twenty-three. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Commissioner Cipio. Do I have a second?
Second motion.
A motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Ganano. Uh, can we have roll call?
Commissioner Ganano?
Yes.
Commissioner Agnani?
Yes.
Cipio?
Yes.
Commissioner Kivutu?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Uh, we'll go to the next part of the agenda, the memorization of resolutions. Um, this is for P B seven nine six dash two three, um, dash two three, and the applicant was Upper Greenwood Realty LLC. Um, just before we go to the attorney's review, uh, commissioners that are eligible to vote on this resolution are commissioners Ganano, Agnani, Cipio, and myself. So with that, um, Mr. Hock, in regards to this applicant, are they still in compliance um with this um application?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, with that being said, from our board attorney, do I have a motion to approve the memorization for, of resolutions for P B seven nine six dash two three?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Cipio. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Agnani. Can I have roll call, please?
Commissioner Gonano?
Yes.
Commissioner Agnani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cipio?
Yes.
Commissioner Kivutu?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Calendar of old business, there are none. So we'll pu, go to the next part of the agenda, which is calendar of new business. Uh, tonight, we will see P B seven nine four dash two three. The applicant is Five Eighty Central Avenue LLC. Um, property address five seven, five eighty Central Avenue, and the presenter is Mark Peck. Um, counsel, are you and your team ready to proceed?
We are, sir, and just to let you know, my name's Philip Gerner. I'm uh replacing uh Mark Peck in this matter.
Understandable. All right, uh, with further ado, you can go ahead and proceed.
Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt everybody. I'm Joaquin, the architect, as an attendee waiting to be allowed into the meeting. I just wanted to bring that up. His hand is raised. Sorry.
Okay, Rhonda, um, can you make sure that he can be a part of the panel?
I'm sorry, this the person, um, uh.
Joaquin?
My name is George. There's a Joaquin Boozers as an attendee.
Okay.
Thank you.
One second.
Also, is John for Zach on?
Yes, I see.
Yep, I'm here.
Yep, Joaquin is in. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. So, council, go ahead and proceed.
Okay, well, first, um, good evening, members of the board, and thank you for taking your time tonight. Um, Philip Gerner, this is the owner of Five Eighty Central Ave LLC, Mirashimi. Joaquin Boozers is our engineer. George is, works with Joaquin, and the traffic surveyor, um, and engineer is John Corack. Um, I'd like to start by saying this afternoon I received comments regarding our application from Mr. Bell from your township. And if it pleases the board, I'd like to take a moment to address those comments right off the bat in hopes that it makes this process go a little bit more smoother and maybe answer some questions that you would have regarding those. Is that all right with everyone? Okay, so are you all in receipt of the comments from Mr. Bell? Let me just take it step by step?
No, I don't have it.
Okay, well, that's fine. Well, um, so he just wrote a few comments regarding our site plan, and I think it might help, um, you know, just clarify any questions you guys might have at the end of this process. So the first, are you, you made general comments? Um, the first one is a grading plan shall be provided. Would like to let you know we're at the bat, um, Five Eighty Central Ave. We'll contact our surveyor and get you guys a grading plan. Um, same thing, the second comment was a top, topographic survey. We're also gonna have our surveyor provide that for you guys as well. Um, then jump to the site plan and details. And Mr. Bell made comments regarding the existing fourteen parking spots with a forty-foot wide parking easement on Lot twenty-one and asking if they'll be restripped. So we want to clarify that the fourteen parking spaces are not actually my client's property. In fact, we have an easement for the use of those um spots. But additionally, those spots have actually been recently repaved and restripped. Um, so I think you guys should be satisfied. Um, so I think you guys should be satisfied there, although again, and this, I mean this prudently, we're always here for defined solutions and we'll be willing to work with you guys any way we can. Uh, next, we want the, um, Mister Bell comments on clarifying if the existing macadam parking lot shall be resurfaced during the construction. Um, we were not, we're planning to replace the existing lot as it's in good condition, but again, we are open to discourse if that is township desire. Um, number three, one van accessible space shall be provided. So my traffic consultant's going to talk a little bit more about this, but although they are two separate lots that Mister Bell is referring to, um, the rear site kind of makes it all one parking lot, which in total provides the required ADA van accessible spaces. With that said, it does not appear to be a heavy shift on our part, um, to make the spaces three feet, three feet to provide the eight foot hatched access aisle necessary for van accessible parking. And again, if that's what the board desires, we're willing to do that. Um, the next comment was that we were going to, we have any proposals for an EV spaces, uh, electric vehicles? We don't. Um, it's our understanding that EV spaces are not required for site, per guidance from the DCA on similar projects, where there's no change to existing parking lot. Slash, the changes less than twenty-five spaces for a realtor, which does not necessitate EV parking. Um, and again, our traffic engineer is going to talk more about that if you guys have more questions. The fifth comment from Mister Bell, again dealing with parking, um, he asked about the existing curb, and we just want to clarify that we will replace the existing curb and provide the evaluations and make sure that it's up to scale and that will be taken care of. Um, he then asked about po- potential bicycle parking spots. Uh, we were not intending to provide bicycle parking spaces, you know, kind of due to the dimensions of the parking lot. But, you know, again, there is some potential space near the fire escape, and we're willing to find out, figure out a solution if the board will like us there. Next is storm water management plan and details. You'll see this on P two point one. Um, he asked about a grading plan. Again, this will be provided with the elevations when we have the surveyor come back, uh, to do the grading plan. Um, next, the overflow measures for the proposed drywall. Um, our engineers can talk more about this, but, um, after discussing with them this afternoon, it's impossible for us to reconnect back to the township sewer system. However, we want you guys to know that the drywall is designed to handle capacity of a ten-year storm with intensity of two inches per sixty-minute duration. Uh, number three, the applicant shall clarify if any land, I'm sorry. You were, uh, sorry, the drywall detail shall be revised to show the filter fabric. Um, I've been informed that we actually have updated for that, and we'll be able to show it to you on our plans tonight. Next is lighting. Lighting plans shall be revised to provide sufficient lighting for the parking spaces towards the rear of the property. Um, so the, as you'll see on our lighting plans, the wall-mounted light fixtures are at max capacity, which, you know, quite frankly, significantly more than any neighboring lot. Again, however, we are willing to find a solution, um, should that become, you know, an issue for you guys. Um, what, the landscaping, um. We were not planning on, on any new landscaping. We have existing grass in the back, four trees, and then a decorative planting in the front of the building, which is provided by the township. Again, what was it open for solutions and ideas? Uh, roof plan. I'm going to let my engineer tackle the roof plan. They didn't teach us much about roofs in law school, so he can certainly talk about that. Um, oh, and then the exterior evaluation. Uh, Mister Bell says here, the applicant shall clarify the fire escape is proposed if your place is provided survey indicates it's in poor condition. So we, of course, plan to get an inspection for the fireplace, and we will follow the inspector and the township's direction regarding any requirements, updates, and of course, will repair and replace as necessary. Um, finally, Mister Bell makes comments about, this is titled miscellaneous. Um, so number one, we plan to use a private trash hauler uh, and follow New Jersey state requirements for cannabis disposal. And we can certainly provide those plans, um, you know, as necessary. Um, number two, we will certainly secure the necessary permits for anything we do, strictly for two and three. Um, you know, of course, we're going to get all the permits that are, are necessary, um, and, and, you know, provide you guys copies upon receipt. We'll adhere to the township's rules and ordinances as well as New Jersey state, the state of New Jersey. Um, sorry if I spoke a little quickly. I, I hope this helped clarify, and I want to be sure the board that five eighty Central Ave LLC, CDB Crest Green hopefully is willing to find solutions to any issues and be productive in accommodating business in the township of East Orange. And that's my opening. Um, and then I'm going to kick it over to our, uh, engineer, Joaquin Boozas, uh, to explain the site plans, if that's all right with members of the board.
You can proceed.
Nice to get this one in.
Yep, Mister Bozus, raise your right hand, please. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Uh, Mister Bozus, can you just, uh, spell your first and last name for the record, please?
Sure, my first name is Joaquin, J O A Q U I N, last name Bozus, B O U Z A S.
Uh, Mister Gertner, you want to qualify your witness, please?
Yes, he's qualified.
Uh.
Well, I'll just give you my background.
Yeah, can you go through his qualifications a little bit?
I'm, I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. I have a bachelor's of architecture from NJIT. I've testified, uh, numerous times, uh, before this board and throughout many other municipalities throughout the state of New Jersey. Uh, my license is current and in good standing.
Mister Chairman, I don't have any issues with Mister Bozus's qualifications.
Yeah, and I've, uh, Mister Bozus has appeared on the board, um, as I've seen him on many occasions as well, so I'd like to, uh, go ahead and proceed, uh, Mister Bozus.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Thank you. Uh, let me just share my screen. Okay, can everybody see that?
Yes, sir.
All right, great.
And just for the record, we're going to mark, um, each slide, just, um, this will be considered A one, next slide will be A two, and just give a description of what we're seeing so that, for the record. If this.
Uh, okay, can I just start with, uh, can I make the aerial, this one A one then?
You want the arrow to be A one? Sure, that's fine.
Okay, and then, um, I just wanted to give context of the location of the property. I'm sure you're all aware of, of the property, but it, it actually will, um, clarify some of the questions, uh, with the parking area. So, um, this white area here is five eighty Central Ave. This is the, um, the property in question. Um, the red, um, square here is the parking area directly behind the building that the, um, the applicant owns. And then this yellow, um, area here is the easement that gives him access into his property through this parking area that's owned by someone else. Um, I forgot to put, um, I can't put it here, oh, here. This. This, um, outline that I just did in red, these are the fourteen additional parking spaces that he has. Um, uh, you, you know, uh, using them from, uh, from this existing parking area. And between these fourteen and the nine parking spaces that he has on his property, those are the twenty-three parking spaces, um, that, uh, the, the application has, um, for use. So, um, that's the aerial A one. I will go to, um, T one, this is the actual, um, drawings. Uh, this would be, um.
For the record, we'll call this A two.
Mm-hmm, yes. Um, and essentially, uh, we have a project description here. Um, this is, uh, essentially an interior fit out of an existing, uh, first floor, uh, it, we're only, uh, fitting out the, the existing first floor. Um, the retail space is going to be renovated to include, uh, new ADA toilets, janitors, closets, uh, administrative office area, uh, back of house support spaces, uh, for the business, um, cannabis storage, um, recreational cannabis sales floor within the building itself on the ground floor, and then, um, and then the alterations on the first floor will include selective demolition, um, and then the masonry stairs and the elevator will remain. Uh, there's no other alterations proposed in the building, uh, the basement is to remain as it is. And, uh, the second floor will remain as is, except it would, uh, uh, get some updates to the existing toilets um, as code requires. Um, these are the sheets. A lot of these bubbles that you see here around this information, uh, we met with the technical review committee, uh, twice. And so, um, you know, we went through a lot of, uh, questions they had and, um, and we've, these bubbles are there for, um, the, the additional information that they had required. Um, due to those meetings. Uh, the parking analysis, as you see here, um, we're required fourteen spaces. We are, we have nine on, on said property, but we have the fourteen additional spaces from the additional, uh, from the adjacent, uh, parking area next door. Um, operation, uh, of the business, um, hours of operation, Sunday through Wednesday, ten AM to ten PM, Thursday through Saturday between ten AM and, uh, eleven fifty-nine. Uh, number of employees, approximately eighteen, um, two working shifts. Uh, delivery hours, all delivery of goods received will occur during normal business hours, Monday through Friday. Um, and then the maximum occupancy of, of forty-five, uh, people. That's due to the fire code. A three. Was loading, and this is, um, an existing survey, um, due to the technical review meeting. This was another thing, we, we, we got a updated survey. Um, so this is an updated one. A four, um, this is, uh, an area map, uh, two hundred foot radius, site map, uh, cannabis location, area map as required. A five, uh, this is the site plan. The site plan, you can see here now, the, uh, nine spaces, we have five here in the back, two here, and then two off-site. Uh, and then the fourteen also, uh, within this area, um. And then this is, the lighter gray is the easement that provides the access into the, um, landlocked parking area. Again, as was noted, uh, there's existing, uh, planters in front of the building, um, that's from the city, uh, no change there, no change to the incredibly beautiful facade. Um, uh, this is the new, um, trash enclosure, uh, that was requested. Uh, this is located here in the back corner of the parking area. This will have a rollout container. Uh, loading dock area, we striped the area, it's existing, um, and we striped it. Um, again, this is the fire escape. The fire escape, um, i- it was noted that, uh, it's either to be removed, uh, th- this, it's an existing fire escape, um, it, it needs to be inspected by a fire escape, um, company, um, it's either going to be, uh, repaired or replaced depending on, uh, its condition, um, but it'll certainly be inspected, um, prior to completing the project. Uh, parking information. A six, um, this is a detail of the drywall, uh, that was also requested by engineering. Um, it's actually, as was mentioned, uh, sized, uh, for, um, ten-year sixty-minute storm, but actually, um, double the capacity of a ten, uh, year sixty-minute storm. Uh, we're pro- we're proposing two new area drains. And, um, one of the comments, uh, which is one of the last comments, on the roof, uh, that the applicant shall clarify where stormwater runoff area drains connect down to the proposed drywall within the subject property. Um, the roof was recently, uh, done. It's, um, a, a brand-new roof on the, on the, on the existing building. It has roof drains that are currently and have always been connected to a storm line that goes out to the street and connects to the existing storm line in the street. Would pose no change to that. Um, this drywall is to pick up any runoff that is happening on, um, on the applicant's property, this, the small, uh, parking area. Um, because there's some puddling around the, uh, loading area, and so, um, this drywall is only for the, uh, parking area. Um, one of the comments was, are we going to be repaving it? Um, we're not going to be repaving it. It's, um, it's in decent condition. I can show you some pictures, uh, after going through the drawings. Um, but it will be restripped. Um, this is detail on the drywall. Um, and basically, um, there will be no overflow because we can't connect to anything. Um, like I, like I said, it's, it's, uh, sized for double, uh, the requirement of, of a ten-year storm. Um, there's nothing existing now, and, um, and so because it's landlocked, we can't connect it to any overflow. Um, is the lighting plan, um. There was some existing lighting, but we've improved it somewhat, but I think, uh, one of the comments was that we, our new lighting is not reaching these back parking spaces, and that is technically true. Um, right now, there's no lighting to those, uh, spaces, but, uh, I agree with that comment. Uh, we should add some additional lighting, which may need to be, um, either from this existing utility pole, or we may need to provide a, install a new utility pole, uh, light pole to light these, uh, parking spaces and just add lighting to the entire, um, small parking area. Those are the details on the lights, they're all LED. This is, uh, the truck circulation, um.
I'm going to, uh, exhibit A eight, by the way, Mister Bozus, is that what you have?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay.
A eight is, um, the truck circulation, showing how the garbage truck will be moving through the adjacent parking area and then into our, uh, parking lot to pick up the trash in the new proposed enclosure. A nine is the basement. Um, these are just, is essentially, uh, showing, uh, existing conditions. Existing boiler room, water meter, sprinkler. And A ten is the proposed, um, first floor. Uh, this has a entrance, you come into this waiting area. Um, here you wait to be let in. Um, here you wait to be let into the sales floor. And then from the sales floor, you exit the vestibule and go out of the building. There's certain levels of security, um, the owner can speak to that if anybody has any questions. But um in in terms of um spaces, we have break room, a mechanical room um for ADA toilets. Um, it's just a storage room and management office, a fulfillment room, a secure storage vault. And then shipping and receiving in the back, security surveillance uh room, and then the existing stairs um to the second floor. If anybody has any questions, please feel free to interrupt me. Yes.
In terms of the parking, you mentioned the fourteen uh parking spaces. Are those parking spaces going to be designated specifically for um Crest Green? Because I'm very familiar with the area and with the lot, there are a number of businesses that are in the area. And I'm quite sure with the anticipated influx of customers that will be coming in. Um, that may create some confusion um in terms of if those spots are not labeled specifically for um cannabis.
I know those spots are um set aside for the owner, uh, I don't know if they'll be actually labeled. Maybe the attorney can.
Yeah, yes, we, sorry, I should address that in my initial opening, we are planning to um label signs, we do need to work with um the other owners of the adjacent uh spot, and communications are open, Mr. Shemi has started that communication. And we are going to get those, we are planning to get those spots uh properly labeled.
Okay, and then the other parking lot, which was the pickup area? Or the, I guess, loading dock pickup area for uh, you know, the furniture and the boxes for the uh, I guess you could say, previous business that was there, that area is the other parking lot that you're referring to?
Yes, the that's, that's the existing parking lot that would also be in use, and we have nine spaces in that area.
And the dumpster is going to be in that area?
I'm sorry?
And the dumpster is going to be in that area as well?
That is correct, yeah. Would you like me to go back to the site plan and point?
Yes, because I was confused in 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 terms of the traffic flow for the trash to be picked up.
Yeah, yeah, no worries.
Without causing problems or confusion or congestion with the parked vehicles.
Right, oh, so, okay, so I'll show you the um just the circulation and these. So, yeah, so here's the circulation plan, uh. The truck, these, it's these dash lines that you see with the arrows.
Coming in from South Harrison?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it comes in from South Harrison, um, and it can, you know, essentially go around uh through all the drive aisles. Um, and then it makes a K-turn here, pulls into here, it comes back, backs into our parking lot. Takes the trash from this corner and then pulls out and drives away.
At what time will trash come? Uh, believe you said you were using a private holder, correct?
Yes.
And what times uh will they be picking up trash?
Yeah, overnight.
Okay, so there the parking spaces will be empty, pretty much.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Question. Regarding the easement, is that going to be on the survey? Is that going to be a permanent easement that is signed so that it, if the man sells his house, no one else will be able to say it no longer exists? How are you working that?
The survey uh that we have and um actually got updated. Uh, sorry, it's taking a little bit to load, but um, see this orange area?
Yes.
That's outlined with this orange line, that's the easement.
Okay.
So that's all noted on the survey, is to answer your question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And filed under the deed as well.
And filed under the deed, yeah. Thank you, George.
Okay, um, question, another question, um, you were showing the layout of the first floor, so um. The only thing that's going to be in this uh location or facility now is cannabis, no longer uh any other retail business going on?
Correct. Correct.
Oh dear, okay.
I have a couple of questions, if I might. And I apologize, oh.
Go ahead, Stephen.
Uh, I apologize that we, I uh just received these plans yesterday, so I didn't get a chance to prepare a review letter, but uh the questions are pretty straightforward, so I guess the first one is, when do you anticipate to have deliveries occur?
Our deliveries are going to be, you know, I, oh, sorry, I put barriers, so, you know, the 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 New State, State of New Jersey law is silent on when deliveries can occur. Um, and, you know, we're obviously going to be operating our business. Um, we were planning on, you know, I guess kind of figuring that is, figuring that out, um. But there's no, you know, laws of right now um from the state anyway, and I didn't see anything in the ordinance for for township to be storage, where we're required to have deliveries at at certain times. That being said, like all this, we are, you know, we are willing to work with you guys and, you know, anything that would, you know, please you, I'm sure we can can make that happen.
My, my concern is that uh I see spaces eight and nine. Looks, they, it it kind of appears that they, eh that there could be conflicts with with loading. So do you, so I guess where I'm driving it is, do you anticipate loadings to be during business hours where patrons will be parking in those spaces? Or would it be prior to uh customers taking those spaces? And if if I'm wrong, is there, do you anticipate no conflict with the loading area and those those two spaces specifically?
Yeah, I think it'll be just like, we we, our business plan will be, will be just as if, just like the trash, where we'll plan to have deliveries, you know, not during uh normal occupational hours. And there's also right, yeah, there's no parking lot in front of the loading dock.
Okay, okay. Um. So I see display areas at the the front of the uh space. On, I think, I guess it's sheet, on the plans, I have a sheet, uh P four and P four point one.
Mm-hmm.
You're, for those displays, what's going to be there? Cause I don't, according to ordinance, you you can't have any products in in the windows, is it going to be signs, is it going to be something else?
Yeah, it's probably going to be covered, you know, um, with uh curtains, you know, stuff like that.
Okay, so that you can't see the
Yeah, yes, no, we we won't let, nothing will be able to see from the sheet look.
Okay, just just wanted to confirm.
Those areas aren't really designated for display, they're just the existing bulkhead of the previous retailer's display area, so there's no to display cannabis in those areas, I understand your concern.
Okay. And then, it looks like that you're going to have storage at the cellar level and the second floor, I just wanted to confirm if are both being used for storage, or is there going to be, is there different purposes for one of the floors?
Yeah, just just storage.
For both?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, there's no other purpose going on, it's just the, just the storage of the product.
Okay. And I think the last question I have for now is, I I think existing, there is the metal gate uh roll downs uh at at the front, along uh central, central avenue, are you going to continue to use those, I guess, when you close up or?
Yeah, I think we'll probably change it to make it a little bit more elegant, um.
Okay.
And again, with any, within any ordinance, it's a town and store, for sure.
Okay. Okay, that sounds good, thank you.
Okay, so, um, we actually, I forgot that we had a colored floor plan that uh notes access, uh, so this would be A eleven, um, which is sheet P four point one. And we have a color, um uh legend here, and so the cyan or the teal or blue-green um color is uh customer access areas. And so the customer would have access through here, the bathrooms, the waiting area. Um, actu- and and I'll note that all these uh uh shapes here, that that those are cameras, um, and so there will be cameras essentially in every corner of this, of this uh floor, um. And so this would be, the the green would be the queued customer access area, this is where the customers uh wait, and then they are let in. Um, restricted areas are the um uh dashed, uh hatched areas here, like the mechanical room and um the elevator to go up to the second floor. Uh, restricted to employees, um, you know, well, for employees, so restricted to um you know, customers, is all these green areas. And then only uh management can go into the secure storage vault uh where the product is stored and the management office. A twelve. Uh, this is the second floor, which essentially is existing, uh existing rack shelving, um these partitions, and like I said, uh, if anything, uh does happen here is it's upgrading uh the existing um bathrooms. A thirteen is um roof plan, and you can see pictures of the roof. It may not look new to you, but it is a new roof. It's a little dirty. And these are the the roof drains. Uh, the roof drains, the order just gets there and goes down into the basement and out into the street as it's always been. A fourteen is um the existing facade, which, as I mentioned, is incredibly ornate and beautiful. And um we're planning on keeping the canopy and um everything that comes along with the facade, so no changes to the facade. Um, and then the the back of the building um will be cleaned, and then the, as I mentioned, the uh fire escape will be inspected. Uh, make sure it's safe uh for use and um put into use again. And that is the end of the presentation, the only thing that I would like to add is just on those uh comments that we got from engineering today. Um, I mentioned the fire escape, I mentioned the roof drains. Uh, lighting. Yeah, and I think the attorney covered uh the rest, um, so that was it, if anybody has any other questions for me?
Uh, commissioners, are there any other questions from Mr. Boses and his uh testimony? All right, uh, just wanted to go back to the lighting plan, just because I know that there's some holes with that. Um, I definitely, I know for myself, I would like to see more lighting over there, especially in that back area. Um, for safety purposes, for one, just because I know, you know, especially during these times of the year, it gets darker. Um, you know, we should definitely have some coverage over there uh for lighting, um. If the client doesn't mind, I would like to put that as a condition, uh, this application to to work with the city to uh, you know, definitely get some lighting coverage for that particular ar- area, especially, um, if the applicant is willing.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. And then, um also to, just also, as Commissioner Garrett Ward mentioned with the labeling, definitely wanted to wanted to make that a condition as well, just because I know just from the other businesses like Blink, that you see people park in those spaces during um those times at night, so definitely would like to see some labeling for those spaces um as well, so, just want to make that a condition, and just for the record, um, just so that we're all aligned.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, it would it, would that help if we just uh uh labeled it as uh shoppers' parking, limited uh time, uh, but to, to have that done?
My, my, my dilemma is the fact that I know that Blink operates sometimes at five o'clock in the morning. Uh, there, they have days when they open up at five, and that could cause some conflict uh for you guys, uh, cause I know, like, sometimes their 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 operation times are like from five to eleven. So at least like, at least have some labeling to, so to let people know, like, you can't park here unless you're going into the business, so to say.
Okay, crest parking?
Yeah, crest parking.
Right, okay.
And then with the uh canopy in the front, I know it says Capricorn right now, that's also going to be turned into crest as well.
Correct, that's right.
Okay, so there's, there is going to be an update on that as well?
Yes.
Uh, okay.
Uh, which we did hear.
Okay, okay. And just lastly, I know, I s- I I did see a one ADA space. I believe you only required, uh, if I'm not mistaken, maybe two ADA spaces?
Well, it's one for every twenty-five.
Yeah, one for every twenty, okay, so yeah, you only need one.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's why we agreed to make it the van accessible.
Well, that's fair. Okay, um, I have no other further questions, uh, commissioners, are there any questions for the architect and his uh testimony?
Yes, the other commissioners get um this via email, because I didn't receive it to look over it in greater detail.
Yeah, because I know you're 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 new to it, uh, you, we usually get it mailed before the meeting, so um, yeah, I know you just got sworn in, so usually you'll get a days before this meeting, so um, we'll make sure, you know, obviously, going forward, good and uh obviously, we just warn you in, but you'll you'll have uh these drawings going forward.
Okay, can I get this one in particular as well?
Uh, Janice.
Along with the um report from Bell?
Yeah, it usually comes with it too as well, Janice, can you just make the note to send Commissioner Garrett Ward these plans? Uh, I know she just got sworn in today, but just so that she has for her records.
Yeah, um, yes, I believe you have a package upstairs, uh, coun- councilman in this city council's office. That is um probably, it didn't say uh Commissioner Linius, it did just say liaison from the city council to the planning board. So there is a package up there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, but going forward, it will come to the mail for you, okay?
Right, thank you.
No problem. Um, so commissioners, are there any other questions for Mr. Boses and his uh testimony? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Boses, uh, counsel, we'll go to your next witness.
I'd like to uh bring in John Corack, who's our uh I'd like to bring in John Corack, who's our traffic engineer.
Good evening.
Mister Corack, can you raise your right hand and do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Mister Corack, can you just state your name again and spell your last name for the record, please?
Yeah, it's John Corack, last name spelled C O R A K. Going to my credentials?
Yes, please.
Just quickly.
Yeah, of course, I'm a project manager with Stonefield Engineering and Design located at ninety-two Park Avenue in Rutherford, New Jersey. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from the College of New Jersey. I'm an expert in the field of traffic and transportation engineering. I've prepared over two hundred traffic studies for land development applications. I've appeared before this board, the zoning board in East Orange and about ninety other boards in the state as well. And my license is currently in good standing.
Yeah, and as I've seen Mister Corack on many occasions, I'd like to go ahead and proceed with his testimony tonight. So Mister Corack, go ahead and proceed.
Great, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen now. We're going to put up the the previous exhibits essentially that Joaquin had up or selected ones, if you will. As he was testifying, I went through and marked each one as, you know, A two, A three, et cetera, so hopefully we can keep a pretty clean and concise record here. And on exhibit A three, which is up on my screen right now, it's the existing condition survey. And what I've done to this is I've also outlined the site itself in this red outline. And the reason for that is when we look at the totality of the existing condition survey, it looks like a very large lot, looks like there's a lot of parking, a lot of activity, but the bulk of it is really related to how do you access the site itself, how do you, you know, get to and from the neighboring streets? And how does this fit in to the fabric of that downtown element within Central Avenue? So the site itself, right, we're located on Central Avenue between South Harrison Street, Street and Evergreen Place. We're about in the middle of the block, the existing beautiful building here in the Central Avenue Commercial District. And so this proposed development is really that adaptive reuse of that structure, really keeping that beautiful facade, keeping that beautiful structure. And the only way to do that within the context of this district and maintain parking off-street for uses like this is through those rear parking areas that we see on a few of these blocks here along Central Avenue. Essentially, an entrance on South Harrison, there's also connectivity through lots four point oh one and four over to Evergreen Place. And ultimately, that provides the vehicle circulation that is that is sometimes desired in downtown areas for parking without sacrificing the the streetscape, without sacrificing the pedestrian elements and really what makes Central Avenue great. Right, we're not cutting up Central Avenue with driveways and other access points. We're able to reutilize that existing building along the site frontage. So as as our site access points, the primary one with the ingress and egress easement is through South Harrison. And of course, the parking, the fourteen parking spaces are a part of that as well. And although it's not identified as an easement, the parking lots do have connectivity out the back toward Evergreen Place. So naturally, our key intersections of focus with our traffic study are at those two corners on on either side of the site, the one, the signalized intersection at South Harrison and the signalized intersection at Evergreen Place. We conduct a turning movement count at each of those intersections during the peak periods, specifically noting the peaks of both the end user as well as the roadway network. We counted on Friday, December eighth from three PM to seven PM. And again, on Saturday, December ninth, from eleven AM to two PM, those are capturing that that Friday afternoon and evening peak as well as a Saturday midday peak that's common with retail users. We identified a peak hour for study. And then we identified or we calculated the levels of service at each of the two intersections. And so for those board members who are new, level of service within the traffic engineering industry, it's a term used to qualitatively describe the operating conditions of a roadway. And in our specific analysis, we are identifying levels of service as it relates to the average delay that a motorist experiences at a particular juncture intersection. So any time that you come, say, to a traffic light, sometimes you have green and you have no delay, other times the light is red and there is some amount of delay that occurs and depending on timing of the light, the volume of traffic, the amount of queuing going on, those are the things that that impact level of service either positively or negatively. That level of service, as I've discussed in in other projects, it's graded on a scale from A to S. But what is not graded on, or the grades don't operate the same way as, say, a school report card where you're striving for all As and Bs. What we designed for in the traffic engineering industry is levels of service C and D. And so when we run those calculations based on the existing traffic volumes, the levels of service from each of the different movements at the intersections, the left turns, through movements, right turns, range from a level of service B as in boy to D as in dog. So right there within the acceptable ranges of levels of service and the overall intersection level of service is a C as in cat, which is again right there in that design range and something that, you know, from traffic engineering standard, from the county standards is something that is operating effectively through this corridor. Similarly, at the site driveways, we have similar levels of service ranging all the way up to A to level of service D during the peak period. So again, you know, these are these are adequate and appropriate levels of service for for this area. We then move into a future year condition, which we consider without this development, but as we know, there are lots of different development projects going on in East Orange and surrounding oranges. And so we've accounted for a number of those projects, including crossings at Brick Church Station, including the the Hughes Soul Building, which I previously testified to, a number of other multifamily residential projects, and we routed traffic volumes from these various projects through the roadway network. And with those new developments coming online in the next few years and those developments which are in totality a greater traffic generator than the proposed development do not have any material impact on the levels of service at either of the two study intersections that we have included within our traffic analysis. We're still maintaining the same levels of service in that that B to D range. Last piece of the puzzle, of course, is to add in the traffic associated with the proposed development cannabis retailer. We calculate that or forecast that traffic volume utilizing the trip generation manual published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. Again, for those board members who are newer, this is a massive data collection from traffic engineers across the country divided by specific types and land uses. It's used by virtually every traffic engineer in the country. It's used by the NJ DOT. It is by and large the industry standard to forecast traffic for you know, for different types of developments. And as we route that traffic in and out of those site driveways, you know, through the parking lots into the easement areas, into the back parking area. Those levels of service that we're seeing at the site driveways and at the signalized intersections are remaining still consistent with the existing and no build conditions, indicating that from a capacity perspective, delay perspective, this project has no significant adverse impact on the surrounding roadway network. The final piece that we look to, and I'll get a little bit more into some of the site plan items here, look at onsite operations, access, how are vehicles circulating through the site? This, of course, is an existing travel pattern and one that is common in downtown areas where you have parking in rear of a building and access through from the side streets while able to maintain a nice pedestrian facade, pedestrian designed oriented area in front of the buildings to really facilitate that downtown character and feel. Zooming into the the existing pavement area, if we look at and and this doesn't show the striping as it as it is presently or proposed. But if you look at this physical area, the the site requirement of fourteen parking spaces and one loading space and the trash enclosure cannot fit within this area. It just, it does not physically fit when we try to stripe it out. And so aside from the 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 doomsday scenario of completely taking down this beautiful building and starting from the ground up where we can can work the access aisles differently. The idea here is that this parking lot and parking areas really function all as one, and so having that parking easement, especially with the labeled spaces, as discussed earlier, helps satisfy that requirement and and, you know, lends itself naturally to parking in the rear of the site, access through the building in the rear for the customers, as I can, I could go back to a later exhibit to show that again. And ultimately, the circulation works very well, you know, for the proposed use and it maintains something that is familiar with drivers today. Let me let me pull down to the to the actual site plan so we can see some of that striping. Here, we'll go on on sheet A eight, which also has the trash maneuver. And one of the things about the the trash vehicle maneuver, this is one of the largest dimensioned vehicles and that has been shown here as far as trash vehicles, a thirty-foot-long vehicle, and we see them range about twenty-two to twenty-eight feet. Rear-loading vehicle can can easily be accommodated within this area and trash pickups for this type of use are are not a very frequent, it's not a very frequent need to collect your typical trash pickup. That said, you know, we have private hauler will not be allowing this trash to overflow or become unsightly. But in terms of the the frequency of of pickup is not something that it is going to be a particular traffic nuisance. The loading area currently accommodates the 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 design of it currently accommodates the furniture store. Cannabis deliveries are typically much smaller vehicles than than furniture store deliveries. We have no no issue with that, that loading area as far as the ability to accommodate you know, tho- those vehicles. And then on the ADA parking spaces, we discussed, one space is required, it is required to be van accessible. We have the the room here to to get us an extra three feet that will bring us to that van accessible compliance. But as as a whole, this being an existing parking circulation, one that works well and the public generally understands, you know, that the the onsite access and design here is not going to cause any any substantial detriment or any adverse impact to the surrounding community. Being able to keep this existing beautiful building instead of, you know, having to retailer this back area to to meet every, you know, strict standard, especially as it relates to putting all the parking on the site itself. It's certainly a benefit to be able to keep that building and keep these operations in check. And it's something that, you know, is really in coherence with, you know, those downtown design aesthetics within the Central Avenue Commercial District. And so with that, I would conclude from a traffic engineering perspective, parking perspective, this project would not have any adverse impact on the surrounding roadway network and the parking provided. It meets the ordinance when you include the the parking easement spaces that are directly next door and, you know, from a customer perspective are essentially one and the same with, you know, with the the entire block here on Central Avenue between Harrison Street and Evergreen Place. With that, that concludes my direct. I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the study.
Commissioners, any questions for Mister Corack and his testimony tonight?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Garrett Ward.
So you showed us the plans for the flow of traffic. Now, part of the parking lot has been paved because it's actually like I don't want to say several parking lots. The byway to go to Evergreen. Is that a right-of-way? Because that parking lot, if last I looked, it wasn't paved. So with the increase of traffic going through that area and that area is already pretty bumpy unless it's been repaved in the last couple of weeks, that area would be an area of concern.
Yeah, so that area is, it's not a public right-of-way, it is a private tax lot. And while we, you know, the the let me try back, let me zoom back in here. The existing parking lot on the neighboring parcel, not our parcel, but the neighboring parcel does provide connections to the back there. It's not something that is part of our access easement in and out of the site itself, as I flip back to to A three here. So the the access easement, basically the ability to get to this rear area, our agreement is with the adjacent property owner to the west to to go in and out of South Harrison, the
But I did hear you mention Evergreen, so that's why I brought it up.
It's, I I completely understand. So Evergreen, the parking lots are connected and you're absolutely right that the parking lot on the adjacent property is in disrepair. But it that's a, it is a, although they're connected, there is no easement agreement with our application and that parking lot. There's no ability for us to you know, to make those kinds of improvements, nor is there a need for one because we do have the access out to South Harrison. But, you know, just understanding that this ultimately, you know, from a from a layperson motorist perspective who can't, you know, who wouldn't have an understanding of what the easements actually look like, it is feasible to go out either way. But as a motorist, if if that area is in disrepair, you're more than likely going to pick the the nicer paved lot and head out to South Harrison Street, especially because we're about right in the middle of the two and there's not a big travel time savings from trying to go out to Evergreen Place either.
But I'm mentioning it because you made it a part of your presentation.
Sure, I mean, it's common for a traffic study to incorporate really the two traffic signals that are on either side of a development. As as far as our ability to repay it, we don't have that ability. And quite frankly, it's not necessary to to support the operations of the site. But we wanted to, we wanted to make sure that that was providing a complete picture to the board as to what the the continuity of the parking areas behind these buildings are.
Okay, but should you include that as a part of the ingress egress? Because that's the way I interpreted it when you mentioned it.
So the 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 majority of the traffic that we're routing does go out to South Harrison. If we were to show that all of our traffic volume heads out there and we don't, if we say no volume to Evergreen Place, we still would not have any adverse level of service impact.
Okay, so now that you're mentioning that all of the traffic will be primarily going through South Harrison, will there be someone designated to direct the traffic if the need comes to it? And I'm asking that because I drove past another cannabis place recently and there was someone on Bloomfield Avenue and there was someone out there directing traffic due to the high volume of customers on particular certain days.
Yeah, that would need to be on a case-by-case basis, depending on really the 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 traffic demand and impact associated with with these sites and what we saw, especially when recreational use became legal and the first stores started popping up. We saw a need for much more intensive traffic direction, you know, boots-on-the-ground-type personnel for for those types of operations. You know, and and as, you know, this site is is outfitted with, you know, they have to, you know, do the interior renovations to the building. You know, whether or not that if that becomes an apparent need, it's something that the you know, the operator certainly you know, the operator certainly need to consider.
And I'm asking that because not only is Blank Fitness or whatever the name of the workout place is, is there, there's a material store there, there's a beauty salon there. Various other shops are right there in that vicinity, and they all share that same parking lot. That's not too far from those fourteen spots that you're designating, but in order to get to where Crest is, if you're saying that the primary area is going to be off of South Harrison, the traffic flow is going to affect the other businesses that are there.
And that's part of any, you know, ingress egress easement through these parking lots. It's a, it's a very common drive out with through this area, but I completely understand the, you know, the concern, but this is something that is, is, you know, from a traffic perspective, this layout and design is is very much in accordance with best practices and the fact that you're able to really navigate that traffic activity toward the back of the site as opposed to say if it was at the corner where you're trying to to handle it all at the driveway and then everyone needs to get past, you know, traffic operations associated with the cannabis retailer. You know, we have a very desirable location in terms of having that traffic and circulation toward the rear in the middle of the block as opposed to to at the corner where every single business has to go, go past.
But all of this will go towards the corner. The corner is not that far from where the driveway entrance is.
It's a, it's a through, it's a through movement as opposed to a stop, wait, park type movement and overall, you know, the the traffic impact associate here, they don't, they don't change those levels of service. They they work very well within this this parking lot area and at the driveways and at the signals.
So refresh my memory because I I can't seem to recall if there is a no left turn signal upon exiting.
At South Harrison?
Yes, because if there's, if traffic is, or customers are trying to make that left with the increased movement that's going to be in that area, that's going to create several problems where that intersection is. So is there a no left turn sign there or will there be a no left turn sign there?
No, there's none present and there's none proposed. And with the the level of service analysis that we've conducted, we don't feel the ones warranted. Of course, deferring to, you know, your your board professionals with that as well, but we that the volume of traffic there and the levels of service don't necessitate that that left turn prohibition.
And you did a traffic study for the volume of traffic on that, in that particular area during the prime
Yes.
Business hours.
Yes, the the peak hours of the roadway and and the facility itself. We're not, we're not, we're not counting, you know, the off peak or anything like that. It's those peak hours.
Right, that's what I'm referring to.
Yep.
Because I would hate to be the one on South Harrison trying to get to Central Avenue and then, you know, there are cars that are constantly making that left turn, impeding my way of being able to get to Central Avenue.
No, the 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 volumes that are are coming through here did not rise to that level of impact, but I completely understand your concern. I I've seen those types of impacts on different projects, different locations, but you know, here with the volumes of traffic from the site itself on South Harrison on Central, it doesn't rise to that level of of impact.
And how long did you do your, your survey or your research on this area?
The the physical data from the counts, it's a four hour peak period on the the Friday evening to three hour peak period on the Saturday midday.
Just for what, just for two days?
Correct.
Um, I would strongly suggest you do it for more than two days because I live, I I I've lived in this city all my life and I've traveled through that area and it's not always that easy to get through at certain times.
Yeah, of course. And there's there's coarse pockets where, you know, some days can be tougher than others, but, you know, these days are representative traffic counts. We see this a lot where we get the requests for additional counts. We conduct the additional counts and they don't show any real substantial change, right? Part of our data review is reviewing with statewide data, right? Because the state also collects traffic volume data in the area. We compare to that data. We make sure that that there's nothing abnormal occurring on, you know, on those days and and as such, right, this traffic study and the the data and the time selected very much in accordance with all industry standards. And and really the the results here show that this project will not have an adverse impact.
And what dates did you do those studies?
December eighth, December ninth of twenty twenty-three.
If I may, can I ask a couple of questions that will further, I guess, some clarification, I guess, some of the help help give the board some more information so that they can gauge this better? Because as you know, this is a relatively new use that's introduced to to the state overall. So I guess the first thing I'm going to ask is how frequent are customer turnover? Is it, is it every, how, or it might be a question for the operator, but it kind of goes, it goes hand in hand with parking. So is it like fifteen minutes or how, do you know how long it would be?
I'd have to defer to the operator on their specific operations. I know that, you know, you could probably pin an average time to it, right? Some customers go in, know exactly what they want to order, place the order and, you know, leave immediately. A lot of times there's, you know, also the ability to order ahead. Other customers are looking for a full consultation service, looking to address specific issues. And and they may take a little bit longer time, but, you know, as far as an average to identify turnover, I don't have that specific number.
Okay, from what I've seen from from other municipalities, it's it's pretty quick. The one, just and and like I said, since it's a new use and there's a lot of concern, the one, I guess, type of business you can kind of compare it to, what I've heard is like, kind of like a trip potlay or some fast casual retail use that you're kind, like you said, you're kind, most of the time you're kind of in and out because if you know you're gonna purchase or whatnot. So yeah, I I feel like it could be pretty quick so that will open up the spaces, so there'll be less vehicle, vehicle, I mean, spaces will open up fairly frequently for for customers who are, who are going to come in. And then I guess further to that point, just to confirm, it looks like there's public metered spaces parallel along this side of Central Avenue, can you, that are pretty close to the entrance along along Central. Can you confirm that's correct?
That's correct. So along Central, there are these bump out pockets that have the street trees, right? And then in between those various pockets are the metered spaces along as well. And so the the store layout itself allows for access for customers both through the rear, which is the the rear parking spaces, as well as the front of the store. So you're able to, you know, further spread out that that customer base utilized on street parking or just customers that are in the area walking.
So just, and just to confirm, so let's say it hypothetically, a customer doesn't find spaces in the rear, that they could just park in the front and I guess if, since it is public, pay for it and then, and then go to the, go to the business.
Right, that is, there's one option that they could take, yes.
Okay, thank you for that.
Commissioners, are there any other questions for Mr. Corack? All right, hearing none. Mr. Gerton, before you go to your next witness, I definitely want to go back to the architect real quick regarding bike spaces because I definitely see there will be a need for this, considering the fact of the parking. I do know that you do have the benefit of having good public transportation circulation with the buses over there as well. But I definitely wanted to propose the idea of having some bike spaces available to kind of promote transit living as well. I know this is not the transit zone per se, but again, you know, with the benefit of having public transportation around there, I definitely think this could be a benefit for one, for you guys to mitigate some of the issues possibly with parking. And then two, I definitely wanted to propose the idea of definitely having similar and similar to RISE. That's the other cannabis store which I'm comparing to in Bluefield, possibly having somebody handling traffic. There's a person there to, you know, kind of say the lot is full. Either got to go through the front or park somewhere else because I could see that being an issue. But before I go to that question, second question, Mr. Boses, is there like a potential like space area for bike, bike racks per se?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. I was looking at that earlier and I thought the best location would be would be this area here in front of the fence. And, you know, I think we could easily fit, you know, four to six bikes there, just like a bike rack. And I I think there's, you know, plenty of room for, you know, backing up of this vehicle, backing up of this one and enough area around the loading dock that it wouldn't be an issue. So, you know, I think we have to take a look at it, but honestly, I think this is really the only spot unless, you know, over here. You know, were you thinking, do you think four bikes would be adequate?
I'm thinking in the range of closer to ten if possible. I know that you're kind of a little bit landlocked. I'm thinking to myself right now as you are speaking, the traffic flow, garbage, but garbage is going to come overnight, so that shouldn't affect anything over there. But, you know, I'm not sure how pleasant that'll be, you know, to have a bike rack right next to the, you know, the trash. I could see it being along the gate, the chain link fence possibly. But again, I know you guys are a little bit landlocked, but I definitely, but I definitely want to make that a condition apart of this application to find some area for for a bike rack, just so that you have multiple ways or means for people to, you know, get to your location and whether it be they walk, drive, or at least, you know, have somewhere to park their bike. I think that would be beneficial for you guys as well, just so that it'll help mitigate some of the parking issues, if that's all right with the applicant.
Sure, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, we're definitely, we'll adjust that.
And would you be opposed? Go ahead before.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I I was just thinking, you know, just to give us a little bit of flexibility. Would the board be opposed to us if, if, you know, if we can get the clearances around the bikes, just because it could be a dangerous condition that we're putting bikes in this, you know, very busy parking area? You know, proposing some, a bike parking in front of the building?
I think that would probably be even the best solution, to be honest with you. I wouldn't be opposed to that. Again, I know that you guys, you're you're basically working more with, trying to do more with less. So I wouldn't be opposed to that. If we could fit at least somewhere between five to ten, I'd be at least happy. I'm not sure if we could get to the other side of that bump out well enough, but if you can try to maximize the space as possible to at least get closer to ten, I I think that'll be helpful. And obviously, that'll take away some of the danger from, you know, putting the bike rack in the back. I think that I'd be more than fine with that if the applicant.
I agree. Appreciate you considering that.
Okay, so I'll be willing to put that as a condition part of this application. And then just secondly, for the applicant himself, in terms of just having somebody there to, you know, manage the traffic flow, I could see that being beneficial just because obviously, you're, if you're coming from South Harrison or even from Evergreen, you all know that there's parking space available or not. And people could just be basically just driving and there's nothing available. And, you know, I think having somebody there manage that would be beneficial for at least the flow of the business to say, you know, there's no parking here. You gotta either find some other means or find another parking spot. Because I know over at Rise, they do the same thing because they have about a lot of thirty cars that they can fit. And they also get filled up too as well. So if the applicant is willing to have that as a part of the condition to have somebody manage traffic, would the applicant be considerate of that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. If you would be agreeable to having that parking attendant during the busy time, I would, it would pop up the bottom line.
All right, we could make that as a part of the condition as well. Okay. Before I go to your next witness counsel, are there any other questions for Mr. Corack and his testimony, Commissioners? Hearing none. He could proceed, Mr. Gertner.
We have no other witnesses, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, before we do other things real quick, I'd also want to ask a question for the architect, Mr. Boses, regarding issue. I know that's also something that's also been mentioned in some of these cases for cannabis. I just wanted to know if there's like a ventilation plan or any of that matters regarding this.
Not at the moment, but there will be a ventilation plan. Well, that is if we do the MEP, we're the engineers for the MEP. But to answer your question, the ventilation plan has to be done. But it would, it's it's part of like the building department application.
That's fair. Okay.
Question?
Go ahead, Krishan Yani.
Does the state require your security to be armed?
But not necessarily, but we intend to have at least one armed guard there. Yes, yeah, it's part of our business, one armed guard.
So one will be armed?
Yeah, one would be armed, yes.
At all times?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, are there any other questions before we go proceed?
Mr. Chairman, I I have a quick question relative to the security issue. In a lot of these applications, we see a written security plan. Is, does the applicant have a security plan to share with the board or no?
Yes, we do. Actually, it has been provided to the state and we have retained a security consultant who would be managing the security, yes. You have assured I would, absolute word.
Okay.
This is, this is Thomas. Did I share? So has that plan been approved though, or are you saying they found deficiencies and you're correcting them with the use of a consultant?
Oh, we are clear.
Okay, so it's a, it's signed off by the state.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make, make it clear because I wasn't, I wasn't sure. Thank you. That's, that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, are you have the questions? Okay, hearing none. Before we go to our board consultants, I'll go to the public first. There's anybody in the public? Rhonda, can you just open it up?
Yep, there's, there's no one there. No one in these area, nope.
Okay, so, all right, so hearing none from the public. We'll go to our board consultants. First, we'll go to the board engineer, DePity.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had two questions for the applicant engineer. I believe the attorney earlier mentioned that the driver is to Uh, I believe the attorney earlier mentioned that the drywall is to be designed for a ten year storm for. Two inches rainfall over a sixteen minute period. Uh, I wanted to know if the uh applicant could share calculations with us? So that we could just review the drainage calculations based on the, based on which the drywall is designed?
Yes, we can, we can share those with you.
Okay, thank you. And uh, the second question was if we could get the soil test results to ensure, especially the permeability rate, to ensure that the. Infiltration will be uh feasible at this site, so this design can be supported.
Uh, yeah, we need a perk test, um, and we'll, we'll share those results with you as well, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, we have them yet, though.
Thank you. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, DePity. Uh, Mr. Martini? Uh, I know you didn't have a chance to, you know, really do your own report, but um, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh. I, everything I asked was answered during uh, during the hearing. Uh, and it was to my satisfaction, so I think it seems that everything would. Were run pretty smoothly, uh, there would be no displays within the windows. Uh, the parking will be satisfied through the, through the easement and as I mentioned previously, that were, that I asked Mr. Corak. Uh, if needed, parking, there is public parking on street, I feel like there. Even though I'm not, not a traffic engineer, but just in terms of the variance, it seems like it is uh sufficient. Uh. And I believe all the other concerns that I had. Uh, regarding the metal roll down gates, they said they would still be, still be used. Um, I think that was, I think that was about it and I agree with the conditions that you met, that you requested, Mr. Chairman.
And in terms of the planters, uh, you think that's satisfactory just from your vantage point?
Yeah, that I, yeah, like I said, I didn't get a chance to thoroughly review and there isn't really too. I mean, that would be only along the, the front edge on Central Ave. I think it seems from what I've reviewed, it seems sufficient to me.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, um, with that, Mr. Gertner, um, if you have no other witnesses, you can go ahead with your summation.
Um, well, like we said when I started off. Reviewing your comments, um, we also, you know, have been approved by the uh, the state, the CRC for SOP plans. Um, our proper licenses. And um, our utmost concern is, you know, making sure you guys are fully aware that. We're willing to work with you every step of the way, we'll certainly meet these conditions. Um, and also, you know, the, of bike spaces are also now become a condition. Um, and we'll certainly provide to you as quickly as possible, we'll produce um. Everything you guys have asked for and we can also um produce our state licenses um and SOPs to you guys as well. Uh, if you feel the table for that. Um. Other than that, when, you know, we really thank you guys for your time. It's been a long time coming for Mr. Hashimi here. Um, he's been, you know, a big part of East Orange for, for most of his life and I think that, um. He's got a good plan and I, I believe that, you know, he wants to operate this with the best interest of the township of East Orange, uh. You know, in his mind at all times.
Definitely. Appreciate that. Um, commissioners, before we put this into motion and, you know. Hammer out all the conditions, I just wanted to see if anybody had any questions or comments. Uh, they were thinking of before uh. Putting this out there, so if commissioners, do you have any comments regarding this uh? A plan, some of your thoughts, please feel free.
Yes, I have a question.
Go ahead.
In terms of the security plan, I know you said that the state had um approved it. Um, your video surveillance, you have a company that's gonna do the twenty-four hour surveillance or? A, a staff person?
Uh, no, that would be also monitored by black belt security.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, are there any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, uh, this is Commissioner Green. Um, I just wanna be clear, uh, all the conditions that you talked about. Prior to a vote, can you, I know you spoke about, I just wanna be clear that are you going to make sure? That they are in the minutes and making sure that those conditions be upon of. Uh, not to vote with approval?
Uh, yes, this will be a part of the approval.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
And then, um, just real quick, um. And this is just a thought in my mind, um, in terms of. The operating business itself, you know, obviously, you know, Mr. Hashimi has been a part of this community for a while. Um, got a chance to meet with him on many occasions, just wanted to see, um, in regards to like, um. You know, the employment of East Orange residents or, you know, training in marijuana, just because again, this is an industry. That, uh, you know, is definitely booming and I could definitely see a lot of people within our community. Definitely benefiting from the job opportunities there. Will there be opportunities for, you know, East Orange residents in this uh? This facility?
Absolutely. I've been, um, um, doing business in city of East Orange for the past almost thirty years. And a hundred percent of my employees ha- are from local and I intend to keep it that way, absolutely.
All right, just wanted to make sure I heard that for the record.
Oh, yeah. Well, as much as possible, I will definitely look into hiring from the local uh, uh workforce. Um, as you know, I'm part of the workforce development board and I, uh, you know, I. I am one who emphasizes on that on all communities, absolutely.
No, most definitely. And I also. And I also just wanted to mention too, you know, obviously with, uh, you know, cannabis business, you know. Definitely, cause this facility is gonna probably be one of the bigger facilities that we have. You know, that's being presented for this, you know, definitely make sure to, you know, give education and, you know, training opportunities again. For people who might, you know. They might not end up, you know, being in East Orange, they might go elsewhere, but you know, giving them the opportunities to, you know, educate them and learn about, you know, the cannabis business, so. Maybe one day they could be in your shoes one day, so I just wanted to put that thought out there as well, um, when thinking about this.
Thank you, yes.
Mr. Chair, if I, if I may, let me, I, I, and, and I will be remiss if I, I didn't say this, but I, I know for a fact that. Uh, Mr. Mayor and his uh business that has been in the community for. A long time, you know, and it, and it's not because, uh, you know, I'm speaking as a commission at the mayor tonight. But he has been uh rock solid with this community, he has been rock solid with. Um, the people in our community, he has been rock solid with. Um, uh, just, just solid with this, the city of East Orange. Uh, but, and when we come, when we talk about. Uh, prior to even this project, uh, Mr. Mayor has been a, a partner to the city. So I just wanna make sure on the record that, you know, and, and I don't normally get on it, on our meetings and. You know, champion folks, but you know, if, if it had to come to my vote tonight and making sure that. We know that we are getting a solid business and his business partners who have been solid. Um, this is one of them and when we talk about community benefits, when we talk about, uh, what we ever have to worry about, um. Uh, his partnership in terms of um doing things in the community, this is one of the companies that we would not have to worry about, so I'm very. Happy to cast my vote for, uh, when the vote come up for this company. Um, in terms of what they want to do here in the city of East Orange and I know the benefits of. What is uh going to happen in the future, so I just wanted to put that on record.
Thank you, Mayor, means a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, commissioners, any other thoughts, questions before we put this on to vote?
I, I have a comment, but I'll wait until after we vote, um.
You sure?
I, well, I'm just saying, um, all I'm gonna say is I have, I'm thinking of what the mayor was just saying, I have a mattress that I purchased. From there about twenty-five years ago and it still works. I don't put it, I have a king size now, but I put the queen size in my, my ten-year-old's room. I got it from downstairs in the basement.
Our, um, customer, our new product is completely just as good.
I'm just saying it still works, it's still good, it's great, you know, it's still comfortable.
Thank you, uh, customer.
Wait, and, and I purchased my, uh, my corduroy jacket from there when the dance studio was further up the street.
Oh, wow.
It was a teenager.
This is your, I just make one comment for the record, um, I'm Lester Taylor, Taylor Law Group, uh, my colleague Phil Gerger has done a phenomenal job this evening. Um, I just want to, on behalf of Mr. Amir Hashemi, who I've known as a, a friend. Um, and I've had the privilege of representing him for the better part of fifteen years or so in various capacities and serving with him on the board. Of the East Orange Historical Society, on the Board of the East Orange General Hospital, uh, which has gone through different iterations. Um, just echo the mayor, uh, Mayor Green's uh comments and sentiments that he has truly been a part of the fabric. Of the community, um, me being just one example of the many opportunities he's provided to people at various levels and stages of their lives and careers. Um, whether it be as customers, selling bulk mattresses, um, and or economic and professional. Opportunities and this has been a, a very long time coming, I commend uh the city under the leadership of Mayor Green. Um, with the various boards that have been part of this process. Um, that Mr. Hashemi has diligently assembled a team of experts who are committed at every stage. And has uh doubled down in his efforts and commitments uh to the city. And we're sitting here with our fingers crossed and very excited that East Orange is on the forefront and leading. In terms of an urban city providing opportunities in the cannabis space. Um, so that we can take advantage of what is quite frankly the future. And so I just wanted to say on behalf of Mr. Hashemi, thank you for your time and your diligence. Uh, it was very well thought through and from my experience in other municipalities across the state, this was one of the better processes, so I wanted to commend you all for your hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Um, so, Mr. Hawk, with that being said, uh, can we just run down the list of conditions? Um, just for the record so that we, uh, all are aligned?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman, uh, as a condition of approval. Uh, the applicant will agree to work with the city to provide and incorporate additional lighting. Uh, I guess that's in the rear of the property. Uh, another condition will be that the fourteen spaces that are in the easement area. Will be labeled as designated parking for, I guess crest parking is the way we're gonna phrase it. Um. The applicant will, uh, work with the city to incorporate, uh, bike spaces, uh, hopefully a, uh, at least ten. Uh, in, some in the front and maybe, uh, to the extent in the back, as many bike spaces as possible. And a condition also will be that there will be a parking attendant. Uh. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chairman, but this was during peak hours of operation or what did we say relative to this condition?
I'll, I'll leave that to the operator, but that's definitely to have an attendant, uh, present, um. To handle the flow of traffic, uh, whether it be. Peak hours or throughout the whole day, that's fine, but definitely at the minimum peak hours.
Okay. Uh, those are all the conditions I had, uh, aside from the standard conditions that we, uh, generally put into our resolutions, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Can I, can I just make a, a correction, uh, Mr. Hawk? Um, the chairman said between five to ten bike part, uh, bike spaces? Um, I just don't wanna be locked to ten and I can't fit them and then we're just, you know, locked there in the approval, I just.
Yeah, no, I, I understood. I, I think the chairman had said he would like to see ten, but understands that you have a tight space, yes.
We'll do our best to get you ten.
Got it.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, um, with that said, uh, commissioners with the. Uh, mentioned conditions from our board attorney, do I have a motion to approve this application?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Gano, for the second, uh, can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner?
Hall? Commissioner Hall? Anyani?
Yeah, yes.
Commissioner Garrett Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner. Stapiel?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonano?
Yes.
Commissioner Kivutu?
Yes.
Commissioner Green?
Without a doubt, yes.
Mr. Chairman?
All right, H P B seven nine four dash two three has been approved. Thank you, uh, Mr. Gertner, Mr. Hashemi, Mr. Taylor for your time tonight, um, definitely looking forward to seeing more of this project and, uh. You know, uh, again, thank you for being great stewards to this community.
Thank you as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Happy New Year, thank you.
All right, we'll make sure that everybody's left the room, so we can go on to the next part of the agenda. Okay, I think everybody's gone. All right, so. Heading to the next part of the agenda, uh, reports of officers, there are none. Um, communications and correspondence, the next planning board regular meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, February seventh. Twenty twenty-four at seven PM via Zoom, so seven PM, we'll have to come in six thirty. Um, so with that being said, um, I like to make.
Can you repeat that? It was, my reception was a little bad.
No worries, uh, the next planning board regular meeting is scheduled for February seventh. Uh, twenty twenty-four at seven PM and again, this will be via Zoom, so we won't have, it won't start at six thirty, just wanted to make that a reminder. So with that being said, um, I'd like to make a motion for adjournment, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, hearing any nays? No nays?
Yes, sir. Before we close out. Um, I apologize, I just wanna first of all, just on, on the mayor's side, say happy new years to everyone. Um, and we are, we are definitely looking, congratulations to you and. Uh, on another term as our chairman on the planning board and also. The vice chair, congratulations to him and just wanna really thank all our commissioners and. Our new, um, chairperson on this committee, Tamika Garrett Ward, who I. Know going to do a, a outstanding job and, and all our partners that are also on the planning board, just wanna. Uh, wish all of y'all a happy, uh, year of twenty twenty-four. And we appreciate everybody for continuing to lock down and lock arms together and help us move our, the city forward. Can't thank you enough, so I just wanted to say that, cause I just had an opportunity all week just to reach out to some of the board members and. Just say thank you for what y'all do each and every day and making sure that we continue our, uh, our, our vision and our mission in terms of. Making this city one of the best cities it is in, in the United States, so thank everyone.
We appreciate you too, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um, and Tamika, again, welcome to the board and thank you for your questions. I know you were kind of, uh, without the plans today, you were doing this behind, with your hands behind your back, so. Uh, you, you asked really good questions today, so we appreciate you and, you know, being a part of this board as well.
Thank you, I'm glad to be on.
Mm-hmm. All right, so with that being said, everybody, thank you again for taking your time out tonight, enjoy the rest of your evening, uh, we'll see each other again in February.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Good night, everyone.